Okay, so Susan, what are you hoping that the board will march through tonight?
Everything that's left over. What did you say? How many function codes?
Ten.
Ten functions. Here's five dash five two. Okay, so this.
I just wanted to know that I that I called the our workshop. Thank you, Mark. Thank you, thank you. That I I called our meeting to order and I'm calling it to order right now. And by my watch, it's like 5:05, 6:04. Thank you, Mark, and we're working on the workshop. Thank you. Sorry.
So as you remember, the board put into place the enrichment function several years ago, and we've been able to offer in both elementary and middle school opportunities in STEM, in the arts, and in fitness. And we offer that either before or after school. We all so it is elementary and middle school that gets this opportunity, and we've kind of woven it in too with some tutorial. So that it is a fun experience, but there's some learning going on as well. So, you know, I'm not sure. I know that it took a little while to get off an atom, but I think this spring we do have offerings. We had some in the winter at the different schools, and we have some this spring being offered in the schools. And it's based on the Schedule C, so contractually. Teachers basically teach eight sessions and, you know, they get the Schedule C per contracts stipend.
All right.
If we wanted to go.
Is this after school?
Before school, after school, and the elementaries, you know, they don't start till nine. Yeah, sometimes they'll do a yoga class in the morning, or they'll do a soccer or something in the morning, get them, you know, going, a math club or math games. So, you know, while they are fun enrichment experiences, they're also pretty educational, too.
Okay, thank you.
Do most kids want to join in?
Oh, yeah. And we have them, you know, we will have multi-age groups, but we also have some for the the younger children, and we have some for the older children. This is where you know about Seth Danner and his famous hiking club that he did in the middle school, and now he does at Charles Barnum. Of course, they've been doing minor, small hikes this year. They haven't done a big trip because of COVID. But, you know, it's very popular, and there's some conditioning and some Friday afternoon bonding sessions that they'll do prior to going on a hike. So that's an example.
Thank you.
So I think the the salaries are, like I said, per contract. It's the total of, it looks like $38,000. It's up just a little bit. Maybe that's because of the stipend increasing a little bit next year. Ken? Question.
It's so we kept this flat at 38,000 from last year's budget. I suppose we could we could be a little more sophisticated on this and calculate out based upon the the change in the in the Schedule C. But for now, we just have this 38,000 in here.
I see the 551 is for benefits, so we've included.
That's right, yeah. Yeah, small amount.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? You want us to switch back?
Yeah, I do. Sorry. So, Susan, I have been paying attention to some research and some things coming out. I'm talking about that that we need to be careful that we're not only just trying to go in terms of recovery from education because of the pandemic and on the different cohorts, but that all the things that the kids have missed sort of being in community, so doing a lot more enrichments around like arts and movement and crafts and whatever. And I was just wondering, would this be a place that we could throw some COVID funds to see if in the next couple of years we could develop those programs that have the benefit of kids who have been away and have gotten to how to act in a in a group, right? Because they can't be near each other, they have to be wearing a mask. And and is there something that we could be thinking about that, you know, kind of like the yoga line?
Right. My goodness, yeah.
Yeah.
We do some book clubs, so you could do some kind of book bibliotherapy, you know, where kids can have different titles of books that they can read and talk about the different characters. That's also a good way to include that. I would say that we have girls on the run at an elementary at Claude Chester and also middle school, the Grotten Middle School, and that's really, that is really about the social emotional component and the fitness component. So I think anytime we tie in those two things, it's very valuable. So we will keep our eye on that, too.
And I just, for me, I'm, it's just one person speaking, but I think it makes sense that that actually is where a COVID, like, that makes sense, because we really are trying to address that what has happened to kids the past year.
Right.
In a way to kind of do that. If I can find that article again, I'll send it along.
Yeah. Yeah.
I thought it was a really kind of well-read, but, okay. It was well-written. I read it well. It was well-written.
Well-read.
We got it, Kim. We got it.
Got it.
I just.
All right, 10.
To the next one.
What's the next one?
The next one, five dash five four is remedial instruction. So you'll see on five dash five four that there's an increase of 2.5 FTEs.
Yeah.
That's made up of the the one literacy interventionist that we got at the high school.
Yes.
The point five Apex teacher, we converted from a from a from a tutor. And the 1.0 FTE, that's the, that's the athletic trainer, I'm sorry, athletic director position that kind of kind of moved over to remedial from from special education.
Whoa, 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 what? I I'm not following you.
The last athletic director that we had
Yeah.
a caseload, he was teacher part-time, and he taught half-time special ed and then half-time. Right. So when he left and, you know, the new person who came in was not special ed certified, we had to pick up the point five in special ed certification.
Okay.
To cover the caseload.
Okay.
And technically, he shows as a 1.0 FTE, because even though a half half administrator, he chose as a full, a full teacher in our FTE analysis.
While an athletic director has never been an admin position, so it's been a full-time teaching position where they taught for part of the time, and then they did the athletic directing.
I, I, I'm with Liz. It's, this is not the the description. I know what you're trying to say, but it's not clean or clear. Maybe it's just me, but that's.
That's me, too. And the other thing we have had in the past of over 20 years ago, though, we did have an admin who was the AD. So that was a long time ago, before your time, Karen, Susan, whatever your name is, Susan. I'm not sure. Karen, I don't know where I'm getting this from, but.
Who was that? Can I ask Liz, Mike? He was never an administrator?
He was in the Administrator Union when I was in.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh. Because he was a health teacher.
Well, I was a social studies teacher, but I was still, you know, I was still an admin.
And and could you tell me, did Mr. Keller say that the point five Apex teacher was going away next year? We didn't need that position because that was just something that was created for the athletic director?
I was confused about that, too. So can you clarify?
We have a full-time tutor in the program. And I explained that having a certified teacher was necessary for signing off on grades and doing some of that, you know, teaching part that is necessary. So the suggestion was made, and we can bring the chart back up and look at it, for the tutor who is actually a certified teacher to be paid the differential to be the certified teacher, so he can do that work without having an additional person. And I think it was also explained from Ted Kelleher that it also is a position that has grown, that the using of this Apex has definitely grown, and more kids have taken advantage of doing that program for some course recovery during the school year, and also for, you know, enhancing their, you know, their courses.
Susan, could you explain Apex?
So, you know, we should probably do a COW and take you through some of the lessons of Apex. I know that early on, Dr. Ackerman and I kind of sat through a couple different presentations, and we've actually gone to see the kids during the summertime. So Apex has a tutorial program, which is really pretty cool, because it does some pre-testing and post-testing, and then it identifies the areas that they need to be tutored around. It also has, you know, significant courses, honors courses, AP, they have courses that are for SAT prep. So they have a lot of offerings that could either be enriching for kids, two tutorials for kids, or they could be credit recovery for kids. Or additional courses, maybe a course in Chinese that we don't service. So there could be courses in Apex that we don't provide in our school. We don't have a teacher certified to teach that, and it's online. But it's online and it's, you know, engaging, kind of like that Khan Academy. I don't know if you're familiar with Khan Academy, you know, where it will have the video clips and, you know, it will help guide and facilitate the learning.
So kind of clarification, the the changing of that position is part of that chart, which is something that we're going to be bringing back on the 17th, right, next week. So but I I need to kind of go back to, so you added a point five to make that a full-time, one, one FTE for the Apex position? Is that correct?
Um.
When you, because when we go down to the bottom line, right, we've added the one-point literacy interventionist at the high school. And then did we just add a point five? So so it's a half-teacher, half-tutor? Or is it going to be one full-time teacher?
So I think that the halftime, was that the position that's the Apex in central office, Ken?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's part, yeah, go ahead.
So we haven't done any of the changes for the high school Apex program. We have not added anything. That was on the chart. But the Apex program for students who needed some kind of an alternative setting, whether it's through expulsion, suspension, or other means that they needed, that program in the central office is being taught now not by a tutor, but a point five Apex teacher, and then the other point five of her job is special education in the transition program.
So, so that's not clear. So that needs, so like, because then what you're talking about is that we have basically, we're using Apex in two different ways. One, in the high school as either supplementing or credit recovery or a class in itself. And the one that's happening in in central office is the suspension, the kids who are.
For the same reasons, Kim. It becomes their coursework. This online becomes their coursework, just like it's done in the high school. It we have, we expand it to include some enrichment and other opportunities for kids.
Okay.
But it's for similar reasons.
We should clarify that line, change his line.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yep.
Yep.
Andrea?
Yeah, I want, I wanted to say that it wasn't just Mr. Kelleher who spoke about the expansion of the duties of the Apex. It was also Lori who talked about that. So she has a different view and a different handle on it. And and as Mrs. Austin said, she and I went to see the the operations. We we went to a kind of an explanation from with the people who present, you know, who designed this program. And then we actually went into the classroom, and even at that time, it was, it was a hum, it really was. And now if it's expanded, it truly does need a full-time person.
I have a question, Kim.
Absolutely.
Do we have to keep this up?
Well, I can certainly take it down.
Thank you. Um, my question is to Susan, when we had students at the high school that wanted to take Mandarin or another course that wasn't going to be offered, we had a program from the state of Connecticut that was used. Has that replaced it, Apex?
I'd have to find out about that. I'm not sure. I have not heard that we've had something like that in the past few years that I hear, so I'd.
And I think we went through learn with it. We went through learn, and it was, it it didn't cost anything. So I was just curious, you know, has Apex replaced this and?
I'd have to find out for you.
Yeah, because we used to have students take Mandarin and German and just different courses that they, you know, weren't offered regularly. They would do it on their own. Okay, I'd appreciate that.
Interesting, yeah.
Thank you.
What I liked about Apex was that it was very positive. The kids who typically were having problems could turn themselves around because of the, really, the way the questions were formatted and the opportunities that they had to get involved in lots of activities. Very, more positive than I've seen ever in any district, never mind.
We have a really good success rate with the program at the high school. And this particular tutor who's been working with him, who really is a certified teacher, you know, he's kind of at graduation, doing the high fives to a lot of kids who probably wouldn't have made it through high school without this. So we have seen some real success with this. So, you know, not saying that it's, you know, that there's not anything else out there better, but we certainly have seen the success in this, both at the central office. I think I mentioned last year that four of the students that were, you know, ready to graduate did graduate with the tutelage of the teacher, tutor, and also the program. So and then we saw that at the high school, too.
That's good.
So, okay, can can, I don't mean to be beating a dead horse, and I don't know why I'm subling on this, but this 1.1 FTE for transfer from the 1230 special education, Ken, what does that mean? Because I want to be able to describe, to explain it to someone, and if I don't understand it, I'm going to have a difficult time.
Yeah, our previous AD was was coded under the special education. He had a half-time load of special education cases. So we took that, when he left, we took that position out of special education, and the new AD does work around remedial, has a half-half-half time load around remedial, and that that's what the 1.0 increase here is.
Okay.
I know that's not succinct, but.
No, I just got to be able to describe it, right?
Yeah.
We might be able to put a narrative, describe it a little better in a narrative. Ken, you and I and Lori will work on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We will do that.
To make it clear. Clear as.
Mud. All right, Dean.
All right. The literacy interventionist, I know there was some discussion about this in other meetings. I presume this is because there's a certain number of kids who do not read at grade level. Do we have an idea of just what that looks like? Do we have ninth graders who were? I mean, how far behind do you have to be before you need the literacy interventionist? Who's it for, in other words?
So it's really for students who are below grade level reading and but may not have an IEP or special education support. So we have a program, or we use this program of SRBI or scientifically research-based intervention in all of our levels in elementary, middle school, and high school. And using the data that we're constantly pulling, we're seeing who is at or above or, you know, below grade level and, you know, and then looking at the tiered levels. So there's three different levels. There's what happens in the core. There's what might be needed in addition to the core instruction, and oftentimes, that's either a tutor or an interventionist. And then a tier three is like the most support that they would need. So they might get daily support. And we have that level of support in elementary and middle school with our interventionists, but we did not have it at the high school in the past several years. When I first got here, we had two interventionists at the high school. As they retired and our budgets got tight, we didn't replace them, Dean. So we were able to get a reading consultant who had a lot of experience with middle school and high school kids. And she's able to service with the support of, I think we have a literacy tutor as well. And we have some some literacy teachers, ELA teachers, who also have some background in reading, too, that helps support. So we identify them through this SRBI process, and then we give them additional teaching in the area of reading.
How many students do you think this this interventionist would be, would have as a caseload, if you will?
I'd have to find that out. I can't even guess what the number would be. You know, in in each of our elementaries, the specialist who's the reading consultant like this one is, they really oversee the whole school process. So they really are a coach and a leader and oversee all of the SRBI at every grade level. So that could be like the whole school that you're monitoring, you know. As far as how many is she servicing, I'd have to find out specifically for you.
All right, thank you.
Any more questions? Thoughts? No, we're going to move on.
Can I just, can I just answer a little bit with Dean? Dean, in the past, what's happened, we've had a teacher that would, the reading specialist would go in to support. Read 180. She would also have her, oh, and that was a program that was at the high school. And those classes were about 15 to 20, and there were multiples of those, especially in ninth grade. And then you would have people, she would also have kids for her herself in her class load. The last time I remember, and they're just going off from memory, she had about 10 to 12 kids every period. So, you know, she herself had about 50 to 60 kids, plus she was supporting another, probably another 25, probably another 50 kids herself. So you're talking about 100, I I think estimate would be around 100 to 150 kids that she's supporting. And I'm telling you because it's necessary. And it's not just the kids that are below grade level. She's also working with, sometimes I I had seen her work with kids that were EL, what is it, ELL, English Language Learners? That didn't really require the English language learner profile, but they needed the support. So I just wanted to give you an idea.
Is the is the main target, the freshmen, to get them ready for 10th grade, or is it?
No, it goes.
Is there, is there a grade focus?
No.
Okay.
No.
Yeah. And I also remember her helping with the students for their, that were on the borderline for their testing. So those students that were needed to like move up to what was it, what was that last, the test before that was called, the state and federal test?
PSAT?
No, 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 this was Connecticut.
CAP.
Yes. Yeah, so she would assist with that. She'd be given a list of students. She would bring them into her classroom and help with them to to support them so that they could pass that test, the CAP test. And she was based in the library, in the back of the library, had a little cubicle.
Well, it has changed slightly, especially now that SRBI is really a mandatory process in our schools. But it is a process of assessing kids, finding out what their needs are, and making sure that they get not only the core instruction, but if they need more, we provide the more. So, and I know that it probably, Liz, you recall, there were two FTEs.
Yes, yes. And then, and then it went to one.
And then it went to one.
And then it went to none.
And then we brought it back because we knew we needed it.
Yeah.
Can I, can I add something?
Yes, Lee, please.
There was a woman who just retired at Connecticut College. That was her job for Connecticut College students. There are a lot of people who have problem reading and comprehension, even in college.
Thank you. Susan, let's move on.
All right, let's do it.
All right, five dash seven eight will be the next one.
We're moving on.
We're moving on. This is teaching and learning. And so we see here the the data manager, which is an ad, what this, there's an error here, the curriculum coordinator, 1.5 FTE should be in here. So I apologize that that didn't make it, but we made that correction. It will be in the in the final.
So explain the curriculum coordinator position that you're talking about, 1.5.
It's the, it's the three half-time curriculum coordinators.
That. UNIS, ELA, and then STEM.
Yep.
And they're the six through 12 coordinators. So they're really, they're really, their home base is really Fitch High School, and then they have a day that they go over to Grotton Middle School as well.
That's right. So, yeah, it didn't make it on this, but their numbers are in the in the.
And 108?
And on five dash seven nine, yeah, 108, exactly. Thank you.
And the administrative assistant has a long history of being in that teaching and learning office and knows all the components of that. So she's a real expert.
I'm sorry, Susan, who is that?
The administrative assistant who's in the teaching and learning office.
Is that 114?
The correct 114.
Okay. Oh, look at you go there, woman.
So salaries are up by mainly driven by the addition of the data manager. Employee benefits are up as well due to the the increase in another FTE.
You see the 108, which is the curriculum coordinators that we just talked about.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, we we overbudgeted a little bit last year, but we're back on track here in FY '22. The, let's see, purchase services, same as last year. Supplies, professional materials, we have a little bit more in there. $1,800, it calculates out to be an increase of 150%.
That's one of those ones that people are going to go, what?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. And then dues, we we spent a little under 1,000 for the past couple of years, so we did bring that down. So total for this, for this function is an increase of 107, 221, or 40%, and being driven by the the data manager addition.
Jay, do you have a question?
I just wanted to clarify, I know the 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 function is curriculum coordinator, but the folks that hold the position, we refer to as department chairs now. Am I correct?
We have department chairs at the high school in areas that these department, these curriculum coordinators don't oversee. So in other words, we have the three curriculum coordinators that are a day teaching and then a day administration, where they do evaluation, coordination, working with teachers in their department. So the answer is that we have both. We have still chairs for areas like the, you know, you know, I'm trying to think, like.
Unified arts?
Unified arts. So that isn't covered by one of those curriculum coordinators, six through 12. So, and they, I think they have a period that they are able to, every other day, that they are able to help coordinate and do budgets and meet with their departments and that kind of thing.
So there are how many chairs?
I don't know. I think there are, well, there's Mark Paluso, who's doing the the PPT facilitation. So with the other three, so there's four, and then I think there might be four more, but I have to check with Ted that are outside those areas.
Andrea?
I think that it seems to me that I've heard that one, that the coordinators could be a department head. I think one of them, yeah.
They are in their area of expertise.
If they're in their area.
Yeah, Amy McKenna, she's the ELA coordinator, six through twelve, but she's also the department chair for Fitch.
And so is Carmita, correct?
Carmita, same thing, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's actually what Jay said, right, was that the curriculum coordinators are also department heads. Isn't that sort of what your clarification was? Jay?
Well, I think we're calling them department chairs now.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah. I I just wanted to clarify that, that make sure that because are there department chairs that fall under some other line than this? 108, I thought they're administrative. 108, I thought their uh, administrative was being covered here.
The department chairs really serve as a teacher, and so they just really have an extra period. Every other day, I think, released to do that kind of work. So it's, it's not the same as the coordinators. They just are addressing Fitch High School.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify because, you know, people hear about how, remember, all the curriculum coordinators went away from the central office. And so now this, this function code has survived along with the dean. And I just want people to understand that this is, this is not your father's curriculum coordinators. This is.
No, I'm saying they're stationed in the schools, they're part teacher and then part administrator, so it's very different.
Right.
You're right. You're right. That's a good point to bring up.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I know Liz, I cut you off and then.
Don't worry about it.
And then Andrea, and then, okay, no. Liz, did you have a?
No.
Rita?
Um. We have the dean in here. Um, no, is not that dean, but before we had the dean. That position is going to change, right?
That's been the proposal. Nothing has been agreed to at this point. You know, we just showed you last night the different proposals that we had. So that's not in this budget. Um, you know, that has not been put in the budget. I think the word dean was in there because we, we base the salary for the curriculum coordinator. Halftime as an administrator is based on a dean salary. Their halftime as a teacher is based on their teaching salary.
That would be, that would be a good narrative and get rid of the dean, because I think that that gets to be.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll do that. Good idea. Yeah.
Yeah.
And um, are they supported by a grant at all?
No.
No.
No, they're in the operation budget.
Thank you.
All right.
Move us on.
All right. Uh, five dash eight zero, uh, this is uh, improvement of instruction. Uh, there are no FTEs um, allocated to this function. Uh, top line are uh, teachers uh, who um, are providing um, curriculum uh, instruction um, direction. Uh, we budgeted 20, 27,500. It's down.
This is, these are um, for curriculum work, for when we have professional learning and our own staff um, has. Gets through the contract extra planning time to provide each other with um, professional learning. So um, that's, we've always had basically that amount. It looks like there's a slight decrease, but we've had that amount. CARES Act did take care of a lot of that this summer when we were compacting curriculum and looking through priority standards. There was a lot of curriculum work that, and collaboration that needed to happen with the pandemic. And CARES Act was able to help support that last year.
Um, line 224, uh, graduate credit courses, this is a reimbursement for um, uh, teachers taking uh, additional classes. We did reduce it last year, um, because Alliance did pick up a portion of that uh, in the prior year. Or this year, I should say. Uh, then uh, in, in, uh. Uh, services, what is this, uh, purchase, sorry. Um, you'll notice um, instructional improvement down um, by almost 10,000. We had moved uh, that over to the special education, if you recall that from uh, last week when we talked to Denise. Uh, but uh, the portion that uh, is for, um, we kind of broke that out. So the portion for special education is in the special education budget.
Right.
And then um, let's see, uh, other purchase services, uh, travel down uh, 9,450. Uh, computer software, uh, this is an increase of 114,000. Um, this is reflective of the additional uh, softwares that uh, that we, we feel we're going to need uh, with the new um, remote learning. Uh, and and those, uh, those types of things included in here would be Apex, the cost for Apex, uh, and then other curriculum type softwares. Um, there's a reduction in a couple of line items here, food and texts. Um, so total is an increase of 100,421, it looks like a a big increase, 97 point.
And I think I've described how textbooks, we've really started investing more on in online text because they get updated and revised. So instead of paying $150 for a textbook that sometimes becomes obsolete when it, you know, goes out from the vendor to us. Um, we're finding that especially with remote learning, having that availability that a student who has a one-to-one Chromebook can just pull up the text. And other resources as well, using the computer.
So the total amount for improvement of structures is an increase of 109,458, that's driven by the, by the software.
Um, Kim?
Yep.
Couldn't that software have come out of the CARES Grant? I mean, because it was specifically used. For the Chromebooks and so forth, right?
We did use, we did use the CARES Act for quite a bit of our software, for the software that um, is the software that we use and have used. Um, all along, we continue to fund that through operations.
Hmm, it's just such a big increase.
It is huge.
And the other thing is that those softwares that we paid for with the CARES Act this year, uh, those, those have annual renewals. Uh, and so this uh, this was uh, anticipating that we'd have to renew those for next year.
Wow. Maybe there could be a description about that.
Yeah, that's true. You kind of, maybe we need to have some type of way of explaining the software, the increase in software.
It's huge.
Yep.
Yeah.
I have to say though, you would be amazed at the cost of software. So for instance, our Lexia program that we use in the elementary school and we use middle school and high school, the Lexia Power Up. And now we, we have the Lexia assessments to get Lexiles on students. That software, when I first started, was like $14,000 seven years ago. It's up to like $40,000, $50,000 a year now. So the, the cost, and we actually are in a partnership with Learn to get like the best deals on Newzilla and Lexia. And um, there's still, the prices are extraordinary. So you think $100,000, that should buy you several softwares, but that just might be two. Especially if it's district pre K through 12, if it's a program that really is a program that we use for all levels. So just putting that out there, that that is, it really, it's like, if you hadn't been grocery shopping for a long time and you went back to the grocery store. Yeah, it just, it floored me, and I, I do pretty good with my wheeling and dealing and trying to get our, our best buy, but it is incredible, the cost.
Jay?
So in the past, um, the finance committee has looked at the technology grant to decide how that's being used. This is something that could come out of that. Um, but because we haven't met in a few months, um, I don't even remember the last time we reviewed that. So could Ken come up with um, a, an analysis of that uh, grant funding, where it's being used now and what the levels are? And um, maybe we can fund some of these technology lines through that and reduce our request to the town.
Yep, we can look at that for sure. Um, we're also going to be putting out a survey for teachers to respond to on, you know, what has been the hot, most highly engaging and effective softwares. We're also looking at usage, we're able to really see who's using the software, so we get reports every month from all of the software. So between those two things, I think we're gonna take a look at that through Curriculum Instruction Committee. Um, and, and really see, you know, um, what's the best, the best resources.
I remember you led an audit of that a few years ago, and we actually saved a substantial amount because we were playing for software that.
Right.
Maybe wasn't being used, so that's.
You're right.
That's a good idea.
Yep.
And you've had success there, so.
Yep, we, so we're gonna do it again.
Well, my guess is stuff that we've used during the pandemic might not be necessarily applicable once we go back to the classroom.
But if there are things that aren't like this near pod, they found some things that they feel are so engaging um, for kids. So you know, those things I want to keep, you know, but we have to really look at it carefully. You're right.
All right, move us on.
All right, five dash eight two, this is uh, Education Media Services. Uh, so you'll, you'll notice a reduction of one FTE, this is due to the uh, consolidation at the elementary school.
Yep.
The other ones uh, stayed the same.
Do we have that in the um, change? Do we have that spelled out in the narrative box?
Yeah, eliminate the FTE due to elementary school consolidation.
Right, okay.
Uh, and then as far as uh, the budget, um, you'll, the salaries are are reduced by 55,000. That's reflective of the reduction of uh, one FTE. Uh, employee benefits, uh, also a reduction of uh, 28,000.
And that's the whole district taking that health savings along with the discount or the efficiency with the one less FTE.
That's correct. Uh, and then supplies, uh, an increase of 3,359, being driven by uh, increase in uh, library books. Um, this, uh, these numbers come through from the, uh, from the site budgets, from the, from the principals. Uh, so that's an increase of 12.1% overall for uh, Educational Media Services, a decrease of 80,348 or a 6.9% decrease.
Any questions about library media? I think also when Mike and I first got here, we didn't see any funds being spent on libraries. And I think it was a concern to a lot of board members, but I think because of the site budget situation. All of the investment from the literacy grant in improving classroom libraries and our libraries, we've seen that we've really kept up with it much better.
Will, will the new One Hard start to help now too?
I think it will. I think it will.
It will too.
And it's gonna engage our kids in their community and their, their own libraries, and it'll give them both print materials and online, so.
And, and the books will, will go from the libraries right to the schools.
That's right.
It's just a great idea.
It is. It's something I think we've all wanted to see happen for a while.
Uh, I have a concern about the, the media specialists. We are going to have elementary schools that have over 600 students in them with one media specialist in each school. And we'll have other Northeast and Colnasky and Charles Barnham that'll have, you know, 350 to 400 students with one media specialist. Do you feel that the media specials in our larger schools are going to be able to handle the caseload of all those children? Or will we, or should we be hiring um, an aide for each of those librarians? I realize, you know, you're saving a media specialist, the salary is quite low. Um, the person must have been new, you know, on, on one of the lower levels. But either that or split the person between both schools. And I ju- I'm just really concerned how someone is going to do that.
Rita, we, we would agree with that. Beth and I and the principals have actually had that conversation. Um, there, you know, the other area I think too is just to have another support person who is a literacy specialist. That can help with either small groups, some of our youngest learners, um, you know, be able to do read alouds even in the preschool. Because we really haven't been able to use library media for our preschools, and these two big schools also have preschool. So you, you really are um, saying some things that we've, we've discussed. And, and maybe there is that possibility, we could get creative, especially that we're gonna have that CARES Act. Um, that it could be tied in with some of the, the remedial work and enrichment work we need to do, so.
Right.
For bringing.
Hopefully all summer.
I know, I know.
Jay?
Uh, Susan, um, I know that at one point, both of the middle schools each had a library technician. Were those both transferred to Groton Middle School to support that larger population?
I think they just have one if I'm, you know, but they do have the, they have the one and a half library media specialist, because those schools are 1,000 each. They each had a library media specialist and then one shares the two, um, and goes in between. And then they have the other person who basically does a lot of the shelving of the books and the helping the kids check out their books and that kind of thing.
Okay.
And they're more of a um, library aide or, I don't know the exact title, but they're, they're a support to the librarian.
They used to be called LTA's.
LTA's, that's it.
And we had, we had quite a few at one time, and they've all been mostly cut. I don't even know if there are really any left, maybe one.
One at the high school and one at the middle school.
Okay, yeah, so we had one in every school.
So would it, would it be helpful for the board to have um, a workup about what that would look like if we had different possibilities? Um, to support the two new elementary schools, um, and see what that would look like in terms of our budget? Just so we can play with that. Because, because it looks like, you know, which is good, because this is how we should be doing it, right? Is that we've gone through the budget and then we're looking at things that, you know, do we need, do we want? You know, and, and, and I think that this is one of those ones that we can put at the, at the tail end to kind of take a look at. If we wanted it, where would it come from and, and also would we, what would we have to give up? So I'm, I'm gonna suggest that that happens.
Okay.
Have that conversation.
Be happy to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Are there any retirements in the media specialists this coming year?
No, no.
Luckily Beth is really expressive because she's on mute so that we can actually tell what she's saying. All right.
All right, next.
All right, five.
Yeah.
Well, this one is, this is actually Board of Ed Services.
Okay, so this is Cabe.
Yep, yes, that's essentially the, the, it's uh, the same amount as we budgeted last year. There is $4,200 in for uh, travel if there were some um, some, uh, some things to, to go to. Uh, and then the, the 2,500 dues, uh, 25, 541, that's uh, 20,000 uh, or so for Cabe. And then 5,000 for the N, um, National.
And that's NSBA.
Yeah.
Uh, so, so no, no change in this uh, in this budget.
And what happened to the money that, that, since board members didn't use it for travel to go to a conference? What happened to that money? The 4,200 last year? Does it just go back to the regular budget?
Yeah, um, and yeah, if it's left over at the end of the year, then it would, would ultimately go back to the town.
To the town, okay.
Yeah.
That should be also something that we should be thinking about at, at the end of the year is sort of what is that money's left over? And, and because I think that there are some places that we have not spent because of the pandemic. Um, that we can kind of then take a look at what, what do we need to do with that? What, what needs to go back to the town because it's town money, and what needs to stay at home to buy what we need, that, that we would need. Liz, um, yeah, I'm sorry, Liz.
It's all right. I, I get it. Susan, with this cover, um. People, a board member to be uh, like the IB guru here, that, you know, I know they have training for central office. But I, I thought they also had training so that you had people within your heads of schools to have the information and, and be that resource person.
Yes, I have attended a couple of them when I first got here, you know, my first couple of years. I haven't attended one recently. There's a couple of different ways that you can attend. You can attend virtual, and I think that's what we've been doing mostly this year, is the virtual kind of trainings. Or you can, you know, they have specific trainings um, for specific reasons in different parts of the country.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just thinking if it would be. Have we ever had a board member that was a trained IB? Um, in the, in the administrative portion of IB, because we're, we've expanded now so much.
Right, right.
You know, I'm just wondering.
The board could decide, that's your professional learning. It could end up be a book study. Um, it could be all kinds of things that you feel would be good. It could be something that we do on a retreat. You know, we could use funds for that, for, you know, a facilitator or, you know. So I think it's really what the board, you know, feels is appropriate. I know that um, we all went to Washington a few years back and had a, a great trip to Washington um, together. So I think that it's really up to the board. So I think that it's really up to the board as a, as a group to decide.
And would these funds then cover that? That's my question.
Well, they.
Possibly?
Yeah, if that's something that you all choose to do, certainly.
Okay, thank you. And Cabe and the national school boards, they have the seminar courses that any board member could take. I mean, there's, there, there's a fee, but you know, it's, it's, it's professional development and it is very important. So I don't think that there would.
Yep.
Part?
I took two of the Cabe and I think I sent it forwarded to you because they sent me the, the program afterwards that was recorded. So I felt it was really worthy. I think two of them were forty dollars total. And I was really, you know, I just wanted to know more about the board and the Roberts rules and, you know, all of that. For me, it was good training for me, but then I shared it with you all. So if you haven't seen it, you know, it's, it's really worthy of the time, you know, it's really good. It's, it probably is a refresher for you. For me, it was kind of new, so.
Yeah, and I'm sure there are board members that, you know, haven't had the, the course either that, because we always had someone come down and do the training with us. And one time it was with the town council, which was really nice.
That's interesting, yeah.
Yeah, we did it together with them.
All right, certainly use it for policy. You know, it's certainly a great resource for policy.
Moving us on.
All right, here we are. We're at Superintendent Services five dash eight six. No change in the FTE account. And then the budget, a slight decrease in salaries and wages, twelve thousand, three thirty-eight.
And I think we'll be noticing some efficiencies too this year because we're getting ready to do the interviews tomorrow and next Wednesday for the assistant superintendent. And then we'll be bringing them, bringing back, you know, the ones that we want to have in a second round to be able to do a task and to have further questioning. So that probably by the time we find someone and they're able to be released from their contract, I'm thinking, you know, we'd be lucky by the end of March. So.
But I would adjust these numbers.
Question?
I'm going to go to Lee.
Um, we have had the minority recruitment advertising for quite a few years. To the best of my knowledge, we, we actually haven't done anything with it. Now that we have the DEI, I, I guess I don't know why it's there if we never do anything with it.
So I think that I'd love to have Lori come and join you during a COW to tell you all the different ways we've used those funds. We actually do it and we've actually hired some of the people that she's gone out and, and met at different venues and, you know, and outreach to some of the colleges that, you know, would have host talent pools of kids and her work at the state level and her plan that she's created and then they've revised with DEI. So I think we will start to see some of the changes. Lee, it's just, it's been a journey for sure.
I know, I know.
So, um, actually Joan, could you just make sure that we're taking notes about what, what people are going to want on a COW? The minority, there was another one too that I have now since lost my memory with so that we can.
Of the LT, the LTA's for the, the support for the library media specialist.
Library media for the bigger schools, yeah.
So just so that we can make sure that it comes back to us when we're done with the budget. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Joan.
Kim, there, there should, you know, this is another area where we might have some savings because there wasn't the administrative travel, you know, workshops and conventions like other years. So that might be another one to look at, food supplies.
Yeah, that has gone way down. Nobody's doing food anymore.
Right, right. So it looks like it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And even our workshops have been virtual, so there's no, you know, back to school breakfast for the teachers, so.
Right.
And if I could add on the food supplies, that, that does cover the unfunded lunch balances that we won't have this year. But we may, we may need next year.
That's right.
Thank you, Ken.
Yep. The, the total for this, for this function is actually a decrease of sixteen thousand, seven fifty or one point one percent. I'll, I'll take it off so you can.
And that's really the workings of central office, supplies for central office for the superintendent's office and assistant superintendent. So, you know, that's really more for our central office folks, that particular function.
Kim, can I ask about line two thirteen? How many people are left under the town's retirement in the central office? That's quite, you know, that's.
The town, town retirement covers central office, secretaries and custodians.
Technicians, tech, we have a couple of people in the technology.
Correct.
So even the custodians? All the custodians?
Well, whatever's in the contract, I'd probably have to relook at that contract, but.
We're getting ready to negotiate it actually coming up so we can take a closer look.
But yeah, we, we got section in the, in the town retirement for those, those three, those three groups.
Because it is increasing. I was just curious.
Yeah, and so as far as we put it, we, we, we put it all here and then we, we actually put half here and then half in the, in the business office, which is the next function. But it does cover all those, all those groups.
So it wouldn't be under the, where we have custodians?
We don't have a breakdown by, by those groups to get a total from the town, so.
The lump.
The lump, yeah. We, we could, we could do, probably could do a better job of, of trying to break that down, but we, we historically have it, but that doesn't mean we can't.
Any other questions? Dean?
Yeah, something came to mind. I remember some years ago, there was some, a, a back and forth. I'm not going to call it a controversy, but there was some misunderstandings, I think, based on nomenclature and categorization. Specifically, there were people who were claiming that the central office had X number of people, when in reality, X number of people did not work in the central office, but they were described in the budget as a business officer, central office people. Has that been? Has that been corrected, if you will?
No, those are the good old days.
Yeah, and you'll notice in our, in our FTE schedule, we have, it's, it's called District Y, we call it DW. Those are the folks that in the past we lumped into with central office, but we broke them out so that there's more definition. But I hope that, I think that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I, I remember it was a, I can't remember the figure, but it was a, there was a stark difference between how many people were physically on Flanders Road. And how many were actually, you know, were, you know, were categorized as central office.
So, so Dean, does this spark you just because we just talked about the total, the clumping of the total retirement fund? And, and maybe if we just had a retirement that the, that, that really kind of reflects a sort of several different groups so that people, when they see that, that they know it's not just that? Is that, is that where you're, is that what sparked this conversation?
Oh, no, no, no. Well, I mean, it, it just occurred to me, I mean, how I got that, that, this thought from this is, I couldn't explain to you, I'm not a brain surgeon. But now that you mention it, maybe a little asterisk when people see town retirement. Maybe a note someplace that says this is, these are the groups it applies to. I'm not so much interested in a breakdown.
No.
And a description of just exactly who falls into that category.
Thank you, Dean.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've been looking forward to having you kind of offer that perspective because this is the first time you've gone, well, no. Truly, because you've gone through the, you've gone through the town council piece of that. And now you're going through the board about how we're, how we're attacking that. So for any help that we can get so that it can be there and it can be clear to them. So we don't have those lovely conversations about having twenty-five people in central office when in fact we only had ten.
Right. I, I will say this is a different animal. It's, it's, it's a, it, it has to be, but I cannot compare. It's, it's apples to pears perhaps.
But, but, but you now, you're the only one that now will have both perspectives. And so it's important for you to have, to share that perspective with us so that we can kind of make sure that, that we are answering the questions that may or may not be needed. And I also think it's hopeful for you to say it's hard to compare the two processes because it's not, it's just two different beasts. I'm going to go to Jay, who's got a question.
Yes, I remember that well, Dean, and I went over to speak to that RTM member. He actually was coming over and counting cars in the parking lot and that sort of thing, trying to reverse engineer how many people were in the building. In any event, just because we're talking about pensions and that sort of thing, I'm wondering if Ken, can you get an update on OPEB? Maybe from Bob Zagami, so we know where we're standing. Are we making any progress? You know, with OPEB chipping away at that, or are we still way underwater? I know we're better than other towns, but I guess I'd just like to know where we stand.
Sure, yeah, I think that report comes out. I think it already has come out, so I will, I will get that.
I'm sorry, what the heck are you talking about? You're speaking Greek to me.
OPEB is, is other post-employment benefits. And so for retired folks that are, that we're still paying benefits for, we need to have a reserve. And so that's what we're talking about is the, the, we, we fund that reserve every year. And in the past, we, we've actually been in a negative position. And, and so what we're trying to do is get it to where we're no longer in a negative position.
So are you talking, is this like health benefits or?
Health benefits primarily.
For retirees?
For retirees, yep.
Okay.
So we've been healthier with our health savings reserve and OPEB. And I think we were trying to cover it and we're really trying to make sure that OPEB is covered too.
Okay. I just had no idea what that was. Never heard of it.
I, I actually don't think, Rita, I don't need to be speaking for you, but like for the years that I had been on, never heard of it, never heard of it. And it like landed.
Two years ago, yeah.
Really hard.
It was an every year thing with the council.
And, and never, but never. Never did come to us. So Liz, welcome to the world of OPEB.
Well, the town came to us. Yeah, the town came to us and said, pay your share.
I don't know how. Jay, it's up to you to try to describe that to me so that I can understand it, along with the health insurance board or. I don't know why we would want to call something a hall when it doesn't really mean it's a hall, so.
The, the only reason I bring it up is we may see some savings this year because of like the travel and everything we've discussed. And I want to give as much back to the town as we can. However, before we do that, if there are obligations that need to be covered, we might be able to do that with some of these. Because unfortunately, towns have been kicking this can down the road for too many years. And the last I looked statewide, OPEB is at a deficit of over a hundred and twenty-four billion.
But so, but Jay, I mean, that is also a good use of taxpayers' dollars, right? Is to make sure that we're meeting our obligation. So I, I, I think that's a, that's a great thought. Thank you.
All right.
All right, moving on.
I think we're pretty close here, aren't we?
We are close. Five dash eight eight, this is the business office. This is, is me and my group. No change in the FTEs. And then as far as the budget, a slight increase in salaries as well as employee benefits. Professional services, these are, this is audit fees, bank fees and, and costs to, to update our, our platform, our e-finance platform. I'm predicting that, that'll, we, we can bring that down by twenty-six hundred dollars. So overall, it's a ten, ten thousand dollar increase, so one point one percent.
Boy, that one point one keeps coming up, doesn't it?
Recurring.
It's a reoccurring thing.
So I'm, I'm going to, Jane, once again, Rita and Liz, I, I absolutely hear you, see you. I just want to make sure that other people who have not spoken have a chance to do so. So Jane, do you have any questions on this?
All right, thank you so much for talking about OPEB. This whole meeting has been very important to me. And now I feel much better about my understanding of OPEB. Thank you.
Good.
Lee, do you have any questions around this? Okay. Also, I appreciate you being very visual because I can then understand what you're saying. And so I, I will go to Rita. Andrea, you, you shook your head. Okay. So Liz and then Rita, I'll recognize.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to know, line two thirteen on function two, three, one, two is identical to function two, two thirteen on function three in the, in the, under the business office. They're identical.
Yeah, so historically, we've taken the, the cost for town retirement, the total cost for all those, all three groups. And we've charged half to the, the superintendent's function and half here. There, there's no particular science to it. It's just a, it's a short.
It's a, it's a fifty fifty split.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I might have missed that comment. Sorry about that.
Thank you for paying attention to that, Rita.
That was my question also about line two thirteen. But I would like to find out how many people receive the town retirement? And the list for that, because that's a huge sum. So it would be nice to know for us, I mean, maybe you can have a, you know, have it here someplace and also have that narrative that this is split. And these are the people that receive a town retirement.
Yeah, I see the narrative having, I, I see the narrative having that it's, it's in between the superintendent and the business. And that also that this is a, a, it, it, Dean said it much nicer than I, I can't speak. But like it, it does cover three different areas of people. I just think that that would make it cleaner.
And how many?
I'm still not clear whether new hires are still being treated the same way. That, I, I can't recall. Was that something that changed contractually at some point?
Yeah, I thought so too.
Like maybe the new hires are not going on the town plan, but maybe we could get some clarification on that. And then just as an aside, Ken, I'd like to see you reduce this department by ten percent. So if you can come back with a proposal on that.
Are you being funny?
I'm being, I hope so.
And I know Lori, when we get back, we usually meet with Lori. And so, you know, she, she could probably help, help assist us with all this information.
Right, yeah.
Right.
All right, we're on to the final function. So five dash nine zero, this is school administration. We didn't go over this, right? We?
No.
Previously, no. All right, so this one you'll notice under administrators that there is a reduction of one point oh. I'm going to point out that the grade six through twelve curriculum coordinators were inadvertently put here. They're, they're not charged here. It's, this is just, so this is going to be corrected. So I, I apologize again that this is a little messed up, but it'll be fixed in the final, the final one. But there's a reduction of one elementary school principal.
That appears here.
Yep, and then under clerical, a reduction of one school secretary. And both of those are due to the elementary school consolidation.
Again, Rita, you know, you brought up the point that these are such bigger schools to have one secretary. It's going to be a challenge. So one of the ways we might be able to get around that is to expand the curriculum or the, I'm sorry, the community coordinator's role. They often will substitute if a secretary's out and they're able to cover like sometimes the real busy parts of the day or, you know, give the secretary a lunch break that they need. So, you know, we can look into that. We really, that's another area that's been very efficient. Because of COVID, they haven't been in as much. And we actually pay for them with a couple of different grants as well. So we will look at that, but it's the same kind of concept with the, the bigger elementary schools.
Yes, yeah.
As far as the budget, you'll see under salaries and wages, the reduction under principals and a reduction under clerical. That's representing the, the reduction of those positions in both those areas. So it's a reduction on salaries of 146,000 or 4.1%. There's a reduction in our employee benefits for the reasons we spoke of before, as well as for the reduction of number of employees in this function. Line 331 is, that, that funds the, the SROs at, at both the middle and the high school. So that's what the 137, 547 covers in the budget.
Could you explain what SROs are?
Oh, sorry. SRO is security, security, security resource officers. They're officers from the police department, the town of Groton Police Department that are stationed within those two schools.
And we share that responsibility with the town. So you know, we pay for their service during the school day when they're, you know, when they're supporting the schools.
Yeah, it turns out to be about 80% I think of their salary that, that we're paying for here.
Are there two?
There are two.
There's one at the high school and one at the middle school. And they've actually worked with social workers going to houses and making sure kids are connected. So they've really been worth their weight in gold in really trying to help connect kids this year.
There's also a large jump on travel by 84, which I'm not sure why for next year. You know, I mean, it was fairly small and then now there's a huge jump to $10,000.
Though I think that's probably coming through their site budgets. We've actually asked them to put in for their professional learning and travel. So that, you know, that, because I don't put in for everybody's professional learning and travel for the principals. So they've probably put that through their site budget.
That's right. But it just seems awfully high to go up that much.
I do know that the five magnet schools, like there's a program at UConn called Confrute. I've actually done masters through that. And so I know that, for instance, Charles Barnum is going to be a discovery. You know, magnet school and they're basing a lot of their work from Ranzouli and Reese at UConn's Center for Gifted. So there is a program, a workshop that occurs each summer, even if it's done remotely, that I know they're thinking about having teachers attend and administrators attend. So that would be a, for instance, that would be just an example of one school, one magnet school getting more professional learning in a certain area that their magnet will address.
I'm going to do Andrea and then I'm going to do Liz.
I, I just wanted to underscore that I, when I was a principal, I attended the Confrute for two summers. It was invaluable. Yeah, it was invaluable. It really was.
Who knows, we might have been there together, Andrea. I went two times in my life, two summers.
I, I, I highly doubt that we were there at the same time, given, given your face and mine.
Well, no. I've been doing this a while.
Liz?
I was just wondering if we're looking to, you know, support our two new elementary schools with more clerical, why take that clerical position out? Why not keep it in and make it a 50/50 split, like one week there? Or however you want to do it. So we have the additional clerical. It's already, it's, it's already, it's been there, you know, and certainly we would not be saving as much, but it's also something that's extremely necessary. So I, I'm just wondering why we just don't keep the clerical person, even though the salary, even though there's a one less school. Just a thought.
So maybe that's something that next week, we can take a look at what that would look like and also what the community outreach grants. And whether we can, whether the needs of those two bigger elementary schools could be met on that, Liz. That's a good point. And we should look at that.
Okay, we will.
Especially since the salary was, like, we're saving $39,000 or, you know, plus, you know, benefits, but.
Right. I, I mean.
It's not like it's huge.
Once again, I think that our last time that we look at the budget, right, is, is for us to all, to kind of take a look at that and kind of make those kind of decisions about that stuff.
And maybe we could find saving someplace else on this page.
I think, like what?
Well, I, I mean, a lot of them have gone up quite a bit. So it'd be nice to know, you know, do they need to go up that much? Is it? What exactly are they asking for here with these different things like food supplies and?
Admin supplies.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, there's that double spread page on site budgets that we really haven't reviewed very carefully. You mentioned it before, Rita. So you're going to see school by school, how they are spending those funds. So you can kind of see what the requests are specific to the schools.
Should that be lumped into here though?
Well, it all, yeah, because we're looking at it two different ways. We're looking at it school by school and then we're looking at it totally here.
Right.
And object code versus function.
Okay.
So I'll just finish this up. Yeah, supplies are up 7,175. That's a 24% increase, being driven by the school admin supplies. Which we can take a closer look, as Susan said, to see which, which, which schools are driving that. And then a reduction in dues and fees. Overall, this, this showing a reduction of 215,273 or 4.9% over last year's budget.
We don't need any paper.
Yeah.
A lot of paper left over because of all this online learning.
Yeah.
So we're not ordering paper next year.
Is there an inventory of what each school has in terms of their, of their supplies that they have available? Like in their supply rooms?
Yes, they keep track of what they have for sure. Yeah. And we don't, we don't, you know, back in the day, I think central office used to hold on to all that stuff and then would give it out. Schools order it and they, they hold on to it. So they know what they have.
And when Mr. Cadre came in, he took all the supplies out of the schools, brought them to the central office and, and divvied them up when they would come begging. Yeah, even for pencils.
When Mike Bernier and I came in, we brought it right back to the schools and we gave them their own account.
Thank you very much.
But they did find, they did find though, that there was doubles and triples and the schools would order so much over and over again.
I can see that. Yeah.
And they weren't careful. So.
Right.
It's improved.
It's improved. So Ken, are, are we, do we, are we done?
You have gone through all of the function pages. Yes.
Did you take any time to look at the site budget? Um, or do you?
Do you do over custodians?
Yeah.
We did custodial with Sam yesterday.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, Rita, well, it was such a long time ago. So, so before we go into the site budget, Jay?
I just want to mention, I was looking at the site budgets and Ken, I'm just not quite sure. I have the one dated 1621. Is that the latest? Before we go over it, it just seems like some of these cells might not be. Or maybe I'm confused, but.
That's a big, long.
Yeah. 1621, and it's going to look different than last year's. Mainly because it's a different number of schools and wasn't able to match it up the way it was in the previous year. So the way it works, I apologize, I'm going right into it. Do we want to look at, at page 2-7?
Yeah.
Why don't we, why don't we, and then I, I have got a couple of questions for the board, but let's, why don't we go ahead and do that?
Okay. Oh, sorry. So it's under, it's under the red section. It's the last page. It's page 2-7. It's kind of a fold out page. And so you're going to notice it looks different. The, the first, the first box, it's kind of middle of the page, is the FY22 budget. And then the right-hand side is the FY21 budget for a different number of schools, because we had, we had six elementaries here. There's only five elementaries over here. But.
You have it broken out by elementary and secondary.
Correct. And then you'll, I also just want to point out that very near the bottom, there's the magnet school support. It was, it was function 1115. In the previous year, we had $30,000 that we split between the two magnet schools. This year, they, we, we split that amongst the five elementary schools because they're all magnet schools and they put that within their site budget versus having that separate function. And so.
Each of the five elementary schools for FY22 will have an additional $6,000 added to their site budget for magnet expenses.
Right. Correct.
Ken, I, I, now that you've walked me through this, this makes more sense to me. So I think that this is just another one of those things where we write that, that it's, it's going to look different because there's people who have, you know, have been with us for a couple of years that have, that we've seen the site budgets like this. To kind of put that, the year that we're talking about is sort of like smack dab in the middle.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I'll make it more clear and.
Yeah, no, it, it, it's, it's good. But once again, the moment that you oriented it to me, I was like, oh, okay, now I know what you mean.
And what, what was the concern, Jay?
I am, I was just having some difficulties with some of these totals.
So, so I can go through it maybe a little more, little more detail. Looking at the FY22 budget section, that's the middle. It's the, it's the three, it's the five elementary schools and then a subtotal for elementary. And then kind of next to it is, is the two secondary schools with a, with a subtotal for secondary schools. And then the, the very last column, which is kind of smack dab in the middle, is just the total of, of all, all seven schools together. I don't know if that helps.
Also that we calculated, they have different numbers for each of the elementary because it's based on the per pupil spending. So we, we take into account how many students each of those schools will have. And then there's an allotment for each student. So that's how it's calculated. Is that right, Ken?
That's right. And that's why you'll notice under Thames River Magnet and Mystic River Magnet, they get higher amounts because they're, they're going to have more students in, in those schools.
So I look at the, if I look at like under supplies, line 18. Okay, I'm looking at the secondary schools. I see that Groton Middle School has 25,000 plus. Fitch has 3,000.
Yeah, that, that, that's what Pete and, and Ted put through.
Okay, so that was, okay.
Isn't that interesting?
So we give the schools a certain amount of money and then the principals decide how they're going to break it out.
Right.
And then this flows through to the function codes based on that.
That's correct. Different functions based upon, you know, if it's, if it's a admin supply, it's going to go to the admin function. But a classroom supply is going to go to one of the instructional functions.
I'm missing that section. So if someone could forward it to me, I'd appreciate, yeah. I keep looking, it's just nowhere here. So I guess it just didn't get included.
Do you have the entire, is it just that one page or the entire red section, Rita?
Um, I have the whole, the, the pink section, the red section. Oh, wait a minute. Yes, I do have it. It was folded so neatly. I thought it was all part of it. Sorry.
Of the red section.
Yes.
Did a good job.
I did. Yeah, it's perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dean, you're off mute. Did you want to say something?
Oh, am I? That's that's by accident. I'm sorry.
Um, darn it, that, that's like, that's how I know when people want to start talking is like, you know, some people raise their hand. I just find like, you know, if I see the microphone is off.
Keeping you on your toes.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Though I can only be on five of my toes because my foot's broken, so.
Just you.
A pattern though, looking at, especially with supplies, that some of our newer buildings are requiring, I think, additional funds for the supplies. So when we're outfitting our brand new schools, you see that those, except for CK. But all the others, you see that, you know, like a Charles Barnum isn't requesting a lot of money, but they probably have an inventory and they're not moving anywhere. And they're not getting fresh new crayons or they're doing it kind of in a probably very efficient way.
The, the plan is to, is to kind of use down the supplies that are in the three elementary schools that are closing. Because we don't really want to move the supplies. It's, it's in a, you know, not an efficient way to to, to, to move those things. So we're hoping to use those down. But then whatever is left over at those three schools, we should you know, reallocate out to, out to the, the remaining five.
Put together a summer toolkit for summer learning. Send it home. Have kids doing more reading, writing and arithmetic.
So when they, when they do these site budgets, do they have to put a justification as to why they're asking for this much money? Is that given? Because I'm looking at line 13, travel conferences. And everybody is, you know, between, you know, 2,000, 1,500, 10,000 for Groton Middle School and then Fitch has 46,000.
Right.
And I'm like, okay, so I'm just wondering, is there a justification that's getting given to these?
Well, there's, you got the IB programs, right?
Yeah.
Right, but they're all.
But middle school does.
Yeah, but careers relate, the careers program along with the IB. I guess, you know.
And a lot of our middle school, Rita, honestly, we still have that MSAP grant. So that's really taking care of a lot of that. And I've actually requested principals to put in, I think they used to think that central office was the Taj Mahal and we had all these funds for all this PD. So I asked them to put in if there were things specific, especially to the new magnets, specific to the magnet schools to put in some funds. And I always say, you really need to think about 50 to $100 per teacher at least.
I was just questioning, you know, just, I just want to know what, you know, what, what's the vision? So I can either support it or, or, you know, I just would like to know what's the, you know, if the, the career related fields is needing a lot more stuff. You know, I understand, believe me, I ran the programs. So I understand how expensive they can be. It's just that, I, it just looked like an anomaly. That's all I'm saying.
I can explain it this way, Rita, it might, I mean. It might help that the MSAP grant has covered the middle years program in a big way.
Okay.
For the grade six through eight. We, we also have middle years in nine and 10 and we're candidacy for NYPD. We're also a candidacy for careers program, international baccalaureate. So there aren't grant funds that help support that. So I do remember Ken, and Ken and I had talked about it, we had talked to the principal about the need for that professional learning experience for those two candidacy programs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Makes a lot of sense.
And as a point of clarification, for the secondary schools in particular, these are budgeted on the different functions. So for instance, IB or the career related program would, they, they kind of, it, it all funnels up to here. So we can show it under one column for, for the high school, say, but it's broken out amongst all the functions.
Right.
Okay.
So, so the way I look at the site budgets is we give them a certain amount of money per building. And then the principals decide how they're going to use the money. It's similar, the town council tells us our bottom line number, but they can't direct us. So I always look at it as we, we're not going to micromanage the buildings. And even though maybe the principals should send a justification to Susan, I don't think we need to review any of that because they're the professionals. It's their building. We can adjust their bottom line and I know. And, uh, I know Dr. Gner in the past has held 25% for example, budget times, but we can't say, um, you know what, Ted? You can't have all that money because we've already given him the money, he decides how to divvy it.
So Jay, your point is really well taken and I think that we all kind of feel really, um, worried about sort of micromanaging sort of the things. But to the point that I think Liz and, um, has talked about is that it would be kind of nice to have, to, to know. Because once again, we have to answer these questions to the, to, to people who are not at, in this meeting. Um, we can easily say, yeah, you know, you're right, but you know what, what they're doing is this, this and this. And so it's not about, Jay, I, I think that there's that line between micromanaging. But also having information so that we can then, so that Susan can say to us and say, hey, you know what? This budget's up a lot and the reason for that is this, this and this. And we can either say, no, we don't agree with it, or we say we, wha- whatever we do. And one of the ways that we don't have to agree with it is we can say, well, we're gonna take out X amount of money and, and you're gonna have to figure that out. So, um, but to Liz's point, I think that it's just nice to have that information. Because once again, I, I, this budget is, I feel really good about this budget, um, that, that we're looking at so far. I think that we've got some tweaking that we need to do. Um, but I, but it's always good to sort of know what the story is. I, I want to know what we're building on.
And I have to tell you that Ken does a great job sitting and meeting with the principals. Mike and I also sit and talk to them about what they're developing. And, and that's how I knew that they really wanted to make sure that magnet schools were supported and that they were able to get the professional learning for the teachers. So having those conversations with us helps me then, and helps Ken then be able to answer some of the questions. And if we don't know the answers, we can go back to that.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm gonna do Dean, and then I'm gonna do Dean and then Rita.
Thanks. We, we face very similar, uh, challenges, uh, on the council as well. We have multiple departments, they're all funded very differently. Education has, you know, big fat grant that comes with it, that, you know, maybe the library doesn't have, for example. And there's always a balancing act and it's also two different schools of thought, depending whether you're on the council or the RTM. The RTM always accuses the council of being dragged through the weeds by the town manager. You know, to what extent do you treat a department or some department as a black box? It's very tempting to say, oh, that's, because you've seen the process, the, the department heads come and they say, well, this is, I'm the chief of police and this is, uh, this is what I need for my police department, this is how I'm gonna staff it. Honestly, what do I know about policing? I may not like the number, it would be very cavalier of me to say, I don't like the number, take 5% off. I could do that, uh, but I'm, I'm, I'm better off when I, when I educate myself about how the budget comes. I've seen, for example, human services batted around. Uh, and March come back and say, well, you want me to cut such and such a percentage? What percentage, I mean, there are only like two people in this function. How many couns, how many fractions of counselors do I get rid of kind of thing? So it's, it's not enough to just come back and say, well, cut this percentage out of the budget. It, it behooves a counselor to say, I know how the thing works and I know you can't get it without eliminating an entire position. What does that mean when you get rid of a position? Or your supplies are too heavy or something like that. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little, um, skeptical about treating the schools as a black box. Uh, I may not have any idea about what any of this stuff, I mean, I do have an idea what it costs. But if you ask me to craft a school system, I can't. I rely on the administration to tell me this is what it costs, personnel, other expenses, et cetera. These are how the numbers are put together. Um, I don't want to micromanage, but I do want to know more about just what the pieces are. And is something out of whack and can it be done better? It just, just throwing, it's kind of stream of consciousness, I'm throwing thoughts out there, I apologize.
No, Dean, don't, don't apologize. Um, because Rita, go ahead. Sorry, I had pulled on you.
Oh, I, I was curious about line nineteen, the science supplies, some schools are zero. And then we go up to Thames River that needs 9,000. I, I, I'm just a little concerned, are we purchasing kits for science for each school still? I mean, I'm hoping science is taught, you know, so it's a little curious as why some schools have like zero.
So as you know, we've had a STEM grant and that's what really afforded us to be able to move to the next generation science standards, the work with crack. The development of our, um, units of study. We've also had kits that we did purchase a while back, but those do need to be refurbished. So there are, you know, there are materials that would be needed to, to upgrade. I would assume, again, but I can, I can talk to Jamie. But I would think because she is a environmental life science magnet, uh, you know, she's really a STEM school, um, with Thames Magnet. That there are some purchases that she's thinking about, you know, through that magnet that might go beyond the core curriculum.
It's more than the high school and that, that's why I was just curious, you know, I mean, and then some are none, so.
I'll find out. Yeah.
Yeah.
You seem to have lost Jay. He's frozen.
He's gone.
Well, I have something I'd like to talk about.
Lee.
Um, again, um, there are certain things that all of us think about for a long time. And I'm still thinking about the athletic director. There were questions that I had, uh, last night, I still have them. Um, again, um, we actually do have an athletic director. He's, we've met him, um, and, and I asked last night, what Mark used to, what he used to make. I, I'd like to know about this because now we're getting to the point where the, the director is making sometimes twice and three times as much of a T, as a teacher. Um, I just would like to have the answers to that before we go into, um, talking to town about this or our TM.
So Lee, absolutely. So Lee, so one of the things that we talked about was that our next meeting, which, um, may or may not be our last sort of finalization of the budget, was to look, was to take a look at that position and to answer those questions. And so, um, unless we have more questions about this, um, about the site budgets, um, I kind of would like to sort of, Lee, that was.
I just don't want to forget about it.
No, 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 thank you, my friend.
Everybody's got their thing.
Absolutely, my, absolutely. And so, um, that was a wonderful segue. And so, um, I guess what I, what I need help in is just to make sure that we're all on the same page about what are the directives that we're asking Susan and her staff to do for us for the seventeenth? Because my goal would be, is, is that we would come to pretty close to finalization on the budget process next Wednesday. So that when we go to Monday, we are actually voting on the actual number. Um, and so that would be my goal. Um, we do have several, we have a couple more days in between the meeting on the 22nd to the 28th. Um, but I want to make sure that, um, we're clear about what we're asking Susan and her staff to come up with, um, for the seventeenth. Is that fair, Jay?
Yeah, sorry, I seem to have lost connection there for a minute, um, so I don't know what was discussed. But, uh, what I was trying to lay out is that for all the years I've been on the board, the superintendent and business manager have, um, met with the principals so they can decide what their site budgets will be. So if we're gonna change that and have every principal come in and justify their site budget, we'll have to add a few more days to the budget process. Personally, I trust the professionals, I trust the folks that are running their building, that this is what they need and that it's been properly justified to the administration. But if we now want to do this additional oversight.
Oops.
I, I don't think anybody wants to do any additional oversight. Did you get that?
I just wanted to know what some of the things were, just to be able to.
That's fine, that's fine.
You know, just like, somebody says, well, why does Fitch want this much? It's just like.
You know, I, I think, I think it's always just so interesting for us as a board, like, how do we like, make sure that we have all the information that we need and that we're getting too much in the weeds and that we're getting too much in the micromanage. And I can't speak for Jay, um, but I, I do know that that's a struggle is, is that we, that we want to make sure that we have the, we, we want to make sure that we have all the information so that we can help defend and help think about, uh, about this. And I just, you know, for me, I really appreciate you guys, um, humoring me because this is the way I think. I think about the budget in terms of a story. Because I, and not a, like a, not a story in terms of fictional about that this is sort of what we're trying to do in a district. This is what we're trying to do to educate our children in the school system. And this is the budget that we have to support that. And so there's a, there's a, the, the budget is kind of like a story that we hang our hats on. Um, and so that's what I, um, as boring for me, Ken, I actually really do appreciate everything that you do. But like, numbers are boring to me, like, so, um, and, and there's reasons why you do, you're business manager and why I do, I do that storytelling piece, right? Um, but I, but I, I just so appreciate the fact that, that our, our budget really kind of like nails our path, right? Um, and this is what we're fighting for. Um, and so once again, when we go into next Wednesday, which could be our finalized meeting, is what, what information do we need to have? As Lee suggests, we want to know what the job description is, correct?
Right.
Want it, we want to know sort of what that salary differential is, correct? We want to know about the Apex thing, is that correct?
Yes.
That's that chart thing, right? Susan, you're looking at me as Kim, you're.
I'm not sure about Apex thing.
There was the conversion of the, uh, tutor to an Apex, uh.
Full-time teacher.
So I'm thinking of the chart that Ken put together and I've actually added to, to look at what would it be for an LMS to be able to support the two new magnet schools that are larger and also secretarial support you had asked me to look into. And you also said, marry that with where could we find some efficiencies as well?
Yep.
Once again, Susan, I just want to make sure that the board is clear about what are all the, um, where is that, so that when you, when you prepare us for the seventeenth, because we're gonna get this information beforehand, that you, when you prepare us for the conversation for on seventeenth, that we're giving you all the information that we need to, that we want. Um, because that's not helpful if that, if we don't do that.
I think that this is important, um, I'm not muted. We need to take the high road. I've seen disastrous things happen when people give the impression of micromanaging the professionals. And I, I'm really impressed with what I'm hearing and seeing tonight. We need to stay on this high road.
Right. So Jay, when you were, um, when you were frozen and then you lost connection, is I, I believe I tried to speak for you, which was to kind of talk about the fact that there's that line between wanting the information then also trying to mi- micromanage and get into the weeds of the budget process. And that I, I find that it's a wa, it's a line, um, and that, um, there's that need to make sure that we have the information so that we can defend, um, what, what we know. Um, but that also we need to sort of trust that, um, this information that Susan, um, gets from her staff is what it is and that we, that we need to, at that point, kind of say, that's what it is. So I didn't mean to speak for you, but that's sort of what I was able.
Is him here? I'm sorry, is Jay here?
Yep.
Oh, he's back, okay.
Yep, I was just making sure that Jay knew what I was saying so that he didn't, so that he knew that, what I was saying and that if I was not speaking, um, correctly for him, that he had the right to sort of, um, to, to correct himself.
I'm just saying that this idea that we're gonna request principals to justify every line in their site budget is, is brand new and it's kind of late in the game to, to change that. And can we get all that information together for the seventeenth?
I, I, I don't want principals to justify, it was just a quick question that could be answered instantly.
Right.
And I think Liz is too. I mean, nobody's asking for that, at least I'm not. But I am asking for the difference for the dean to the vice principal.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, yeah, definitely.
Running list and that's something we need to spend time on.
Right, and, and then also sort of where, what, what efficiencies, like what, what we would need to, like, if we. Okay, so this is the deal, like if we, if we saw this as a wish list, like if we got everything off the wish list, what would we, what would it cost us? And also, is it something that we kind of build towards? Um, that I, I, I actually, um, I compliment your, um, secondary principals who came last night. And I think that they very eloquently, um, spoke to what their needs were. Um, and I appreciate that because I think that it's, now is the time to make this a campus thing, right? Like this is what we, this is what we, um, banked on, this is what we said. Um, but, you know, I, I kind of want to know, like, um, we've kind of heard from the town council and the RTM that, that monies are tight. And I don't want, um, I want to be able to kind of be able to say, this is what our budget is, is this is what we need. Um, but also know what it would look like if we didn't get what we, that we needed and making sure that it's reasonable about what we have.
And I think you noticed that one of those positions, the social worker, to make sure that we had that social work support in all our schools could be ki- taken care of by the CARES, by the CARES Act too. So there might be other things that would be new to us that would not be surplanting the operation budget that could be looked at as well. Um, so, you know, I'm happy to look at that with Ken and Lori and the principals, um, to see if there are other efficiencies that we can find.
And I would appreciate that, but also just to remember that, um, I feel really strongly, and I'm speaking for me, um, is that we cannot, um, because CARES Act is a one-time.
Right.
Deal, and so that I don't want to create any position, um, that we then either have to get rid of because we just can't support it in our budget, or that we are adding onto the budget, which is what people are concerned about. Is, is that we keep on adding things and what do we, and what, and what do we lose? I don't necessarily agree to that argument, but, um, I think we have to answer to that.
Ken, I, I, I also want to remember about the social studies teacher at the high school that we were thinking about, that that department really needs another teacher. And, and maybe it could be offset by a decrease in another department. That might have, you know, depending on class sizes, which we still haven't received that yet. Um, I know it's difficult this year because so many students are remote and might not have an accurate estimate, but we could base it on the year before.
We've actually put a call out for all those questions and we're receiving that back. So Ken and I will review that and I'll try to get all that information in my board notes, so you'll have it.
Thank you. Oh, wow. That's a lot. Usually it comes as like this thick book to us. You know, and they go through every single course and how many students are in each course, um, which has always been extremely helpful.
Yeah, well, we have something very similar, it's on an Excel spreadsheet, so we'll be able to get that to you. Yeah.
Thank you, Susan.
And are we thinking, Kim, are you, uh, I mean, right now it's a 1.07% increase. Is that what the board wants to see going forward with the town council?
Um, I think that that's a discussion that we have next, that we have next week. Once we look at those other positions and, because I think, once again, I think that if we all say, we all need to have oranges and oranges cost us blank. We then have to take a look at, do we just add the oranges or do we have to take something away from that? Um, in order for, to make that happen, I'm, I don't, I don't hear that from the board yet and I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to poll that because we don't have information, I think that is, thank you, Lee, I love you. Um, I, I, darn you. Um, I, 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 we just don't have all the information that we need.
Right.
And also, we haven't talked about the health, I feel like I'm Jay. I, I also don't think that we have enough information from the health insurance account and whether we can take more monies from that or what our cor, what our corridor has to look like in order to support, um, what has, what needs to have happened. Um, so, um, I, I, we're not there yet, Rita. We gotta, I gotta warn the board, we, we've gotta get, we gotta get there pretty quickly, guys.
Yes.
Like this is, and you know, I, um, I, I've said this warning since Ja- January first, right? Is that we think we have a lot of time, but we don't. And I'm, we've gotten through what we've gotten through. Um, but please plan on the Wednesday to be a meeting where we're really chewing on some really hard stuff. Um, and Susan, as much as the staff can get to us um, for the weekend, so that we can review it, that would be helpful. So that I ask that people just really spend some time thinking about that. Um, so that when we come on Wednesday, we can make our conversations pretty directed. Liz?
Okay.
Other, did we miss anything to give to? I hear you, Andrea. You're moving forward.
Am I, I'm, I'm unmuted.
I, I hear that. I see that. Thank you. Are there other things that we feel like we need to have a conversation about?
I just think we have to be careful with the percentage we're going to present to the town.
Yes. I don't know about you, but I'm pretty darn proud of this district when we think about our budget and we think about what we're doing for our students. I'm, I'm thinking pretty, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking pretty positive. All right. All those, I need a motion on the floor for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Gracie. I have Liz for a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Pose.
Thank you.
Abstain. Thank you, guys.
Good night.
You.
Great night.
Good morning, Kim. I've got my notes.
7:30ish.